Oh.
Yeah, I can actually call it. Which makes sense. But it's not. And then.
Who was in a giant family? You're gonna have the elephant.
Yeah. But you want to make some.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna get to start it, okay guys? Call this meeting to order at six oh six on November nineteenth, twenty twenty five. It's a regular school board meeting for Grand Valley School District number seventy one. We need a local call. Clay Tucker.
Hannah Mitchell.
Like that. Eric Blue.
Ken Domley. Just rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as strong.
Does anybody have any changes they would like to make to the agenda?
I'll motion to approve the bounty agendas written second.
You have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye? Okay. Did we have any community forum items?
None of them.
Okay. Would anybody like to move a consent agenda item to a discussion item? Okay. Would you like to make a motion to approve the consent?
I will make a motion to approve the consent.
Also.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye? All right, next item is delegation and reports. First come on is the baseball field update by Mr. Tray.
First one. For the two folks up front to dawn, my name's Frank Tray, I'm the head coach for the baseball team here at high school, and this is my assistant coach Greg Colby. I just want to take a few minutes to update you guys on the progress of the field. We were rolling pretty good, working hard all summer. Unfortunately, things have slowed down this last month due to some health issues and weather. But I kind of wanted to go over just the monies that has been spent out there at the ball field so you guys kind of understand the gravity of how big this project is and is continuing to be. It started two years ago with excavation of the land out there provided by the school district. That was sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for excavation. Another sixteen hundred dollars for culverts for water dispersment, trying to keep it off the field. The fencing for the outfield was eight thousand dollars. Irrigation was a little, and these numbers are all very conservative, it's a little bit more than this, but this is just baseline. The fencing was eight thousand dollars, the irrigation for the outfield and infield was a little over nineteen thousand dollars. Grass seed was sixteen hundred dollars. Fertilizer thirteen hundred. Rental equipment for trenching and some other things was a little over a thousand dollars. The clay for the infield was sixteen thousand dollars. That's just the clay material for the infield to play on, sixteen thousand dollars. The clay bricks, we're trying to do everything as professional as we can, so we utilize clay bricks for longevity purposes for the baggage box and for building of the mound. Clay bricks for home plate and the pitching mound were three thousand dollars. Sun Rock donated eighty eight hundred dollars with the concrete for the project. That was all the foundations for the backstop and the platforms and foundations for the dugouts, first base and third base act. That was eighty eight hundred dollars. Wright Brother Construction, Richard.
Peters.
Peters, his company. They donated a work crew, I was out there with them for four days straight and I thought it'd be Richard and I out there working. He had a whole work crew, there was like five guys. His whole concrete team was out there for four days, probably ten to eleven hours a day. They donated all the work, they set all the forms for the dugouts and the footings for the backstop, new wall. The backstop itself cost twenty four thousand dollars. Sand, miscellaneous sand for mixing concrete stuff was four hundred dollars. Equipment shed was purchased last, or this summer to keep the equipment that we need out there for mowing the lawn and all that other stuff. Baselite from town donated fifteen hundred dollars worth of blockwork, I'm sorry, blocks and mortar. They donate anything else, Greg, do you organize that? Yeah, cap block, block, somewhere between fifteen hundred, maybe two thousand more. I just put down fifteen hundred dollars. Mortar from Home Depot that we purchased was six hundred bucks. Additional blocks from Home Depot were five hundred. And unknown donors donated three thousand dollars worth of cinder block for the backstop project and the dugout project. The bases, just home plate bases and the rubber for the mound is five hundred dollars. And generator, we had to buy a generator out there because there's electricity to run the tools and everything, and other miscellaneous tools was a thousand. And the lawnmower to mow the lawn out there, I was using my personal one, it was like forty inches and it took me almost five and a half hours to cut it. So we were lucky enough that somebody bought us a, what is it, sixty inch or two inch deck mower, so it only takes me about two and a half hours to mow it now, so quite a bit different. Through these phases, this first and second phase of the project, we have spent a hundred twenty seven thousand dollars, a little over a hundred twenty seven thousand dollars, at zero cost to the school. That's all through private donations, our own personal money and all, literally thousands of hours of volunteer time. So it hasn't cost the school a penny at this point. Second phase, what's that?
Good job.
Yeah, you're welcome. Call it Sandy. So the next phase is we've got to get the protective railing up on the fence, the tarping for the outfield before our first game, which I think is scheduled for April thirteenth of next year. So God willing, we'll have an early spring, the field will be drying up to have our home games. Last year I was able to work out a deal with Home, Horseshoe Bend, and they allowed us to play our home games there, which we worked out really well. We just split the gate with them and they seemed happy with that, plus we did all the maintenance on the field down there and the field looked better than it had in a long time, so they were happy. So God willing, we'll have an early spring, the field will be dry and we'll be able to have our home games here next year. Next phase is going to include additional fencing down the first base and third base line. Estimate that will run around, would we say Greg, fifteen hundred, about twelve hundred dollars for additional fencing for that. And big thing too is bleachers, we've estimated cost around eight thousand dollars. And a scoreboard, which in the middle of the line will be around eighty five hundred dollars. So that's be our next project in trying to fundraise for those items and get those implemented. Most likely it's not going to happen before next year, but it will be towards the end of summer. And our goal is, if we can't play our own home games here, to have the field ready and managed, bullet dried out and have tournaments throughout the summer to fundraise and to generate revenue for the ball field project, which is going to be a continuous thing. Ultimately, we'd love to get power out there, get a concession, get an announcer's booth behind home plate and a nice scoreboard to keep track of all of our victories. Greg, you got anything else? You gonna ask for money? Real quick, just, I know just from being on that side of things sometimes and being on this side, the easy thing to say is, we can't afford it. Don't have the money, thanks, good job, appreciate it. Kind of want to suggest that maybe we flip the switch a little bit in our brains and say, instead of saying we can't afford it, is ask the question, how can we afford it? How can we do this? Because there's some things that we could use, the scoreboard and the stands would be really important for the games next year. So instead of just saying, well, you know, oh well, no, but well, maybe like five years from now we can, we can do something, let's maybe try and figure out how we can make it work somehow. Whatever, take it outside the box, however that works, to try and figure out some money between now and next spring, if we can use some money for some of this stuff, it would be greatly appreciated. Anybody have any questions as far as production of the project?
If you've done an excellent job, I personally know that you guys would lose gears into it, so that's going to be a class one for any of the schools, which less than forty nine years.
All specs are collegiate specs, everything spec'd out, so I mean, we could have J C's out here playing tournaments and stuff too, not just high school.
One thing I haven't asked you is, you speak of tournaments, how much money do you tip if you raise like, we can't turn, do you have any idea?
It just depends on out, you know, the turnout that you get. I think once people come out here and start playing on this field and they see the venue, I mean, it's awe inspiring, it's after, see the mountains, see that in the valley. I think once the word gets out and how nice the field is going to be when it's completed, I don't think we're going to have a problem generating revenue through additional tournaments. But, you know, word's going to get out that it's cool venue, you know, and you make it, you market it in a way that you utilize, you know, the playhouse and people coming up for the weekend to camp out here and playing two, two day, three day tournament. It's a very marketable venue and it's going to be able to generate a lot of money for the for the school and for the continued phases of the project out there, you know, once, once we get all the phases done, you know, the scoreboard and concessions and our restroom, that's all money that's going to continue for years for the school, you know, because once the project is complete, all you got to do is worry about maintenance. And I've been doing all the maintenance. The school janitors or, you know, maintenance guys, they don't, other than blowing out sprinklers, they don't do anything out there. I do it all, so that's all money for the school district and the school that's going to be generated, hopefully, long after I'm gone, you know, so I think it's going to be a really nice venue and if it's marketed properly, it's a tourist destination slash tournament for the weekend, you know, for businesses up here as well as the ball field, so I think it'd be a good thing for the town and community. Any other questions?
That's pretty impressive. I didn't have a good concept of how much everything was costing. I knew you guys had been in a lot of hours and there had been a lot of donations, but not.
Yeah, paid for it has been, you know, helpful with donations. There's been a couple private citizens that have paid, you know, large contributions to it financially. And just fundraising, you know, just keep fundraising, just gotta keep going until it's done.
Just thought of something else, probably sponsorships, you know, signs in the outfield.
We've got, yeah, those are ordered. I didn't want to put any of that stuff up yet because I want to keep it fresh.
But you knew already that sponsorships?
Yeah, yeah, we've been, we've been selling, doing sponsorship banners for the last few months. And those will be installed next spring. I don't want to put any of that stuff up just yet because no sense in having weather tarnish them until they're ready to.
I know, we already got them very good.
Yeah, so if anybody has been out there, go look. I took a couple people out there and it's like, wow, it looks like a real baseball field now. And it does, it's awesome. We build it till come.
So what part of the situation?
What's that?
Is the parking situation good?
Uh, we're still trying to work that out with the school. Local folks on that road. I'm trying to be politically correct here. Think they own the road, and when you look at maps, the school district actually owns two thirds of that road. Your property line goes almost to the other side of the road. So it's not, it is school property. Some people maintain that road, it doesn't make it their road. But trying to be good neighbors, I've been talking with Ryan Williams and we're trying to work out a way to keep traffic for the venue off of that road. They come in through those ponds there, maybe put in another road and another gate. And access that area that's by the softball field where all that old dirt is where they, you know, stockpiled that dirt years ago when they were building that school. Flatten that area out, put in a gate through there and park the vehicles there and have access to the ball field through that way. That way you have a focal point where pedestrians come in, collect your gate fee and keep all the traffic off that road and in the school property. We just got to get, cut a road in there and do that. One more property. That's the plan.
So a few years back, probably four or five years ago, there was a road that was cut in from the backside of the treatment plant through some brush. Is that road usable at all or?
I honestly, I haven't been out there to survey it yet, so I'd have to go out there walking.
I was just curious, they used.
And that's maybe.
Funds to cut that.
Oh, really? Okay, if there's a foundation for a road in there, that'd be very helpful. Is it through that fenced portion or is it parallel to that fenced portion of the pond?
It went around the east side of the football field, came back across the backside of the treatment plant, so like what you, is there the backside of the football field?
Yeah.
And then through some brush.
Oh, okay, yeah, I think that's, that access road is the one I think she's talking about, goes in the left field. We have a vehicle gate that we put in there for emergency responsive. You know, got the bed, kid gets hurt during the game, we wanted to have emergency responders to have direct access to the field. So that road is already there. And we kicked it around having parking back there and utilizing that to access the field for patrons and whatnot. But it's too close to the left field inbound line and once a game starts, you don't want people coming through left field fencing and walking down the baseline. It's just going to be a total distraction, it's just not going to be very feasible. So we kind of ruled that out and it would be to the backside of that where the fenced in portion of that treatment plan is, cutting a road would be parallel to Severance's Road. And bringing in the vehicles and pedestrian traffic through there. And concessions for this first, you know, year two, three, whatever it takes to accumulating the funds to build concessions, yeah, will most likely be easier of some bar cues and quick hamburgers and all that sort of thing, just to generate revenue for the project.
I went down there a lot throughout the summer and checked it out. So I have a good feel for how much time you guys put in for that. It was quite an undertaking. I did take some photos with the drone during construction and things, I'll give it to you guys. Have a really cool photo of the white oak back in the, it's behind the outfield, so I'm pretty sure we have the only field in Michigan with the white oak. Can't, so can't promise that, but really confident. No, thank you guys so much for doing that. I think it'd be nice to get a list of people that have worked on that and maybe have kids send a letter or something.
You know, I got a question for you guys. You know, I purchased the shed out there for supplies and whatnot and it needs to get painted. Is that something the art kids could do as an extra credit or something? Do you go out there and get it painted before the snow flies?
I know some people, I do technical theater and part of that is set design, set painting and whatnot, so that would be something that would be in the hospital, absolutely.
Okay, that would be wonderful to get. And then if you guys want to be fancy and throw up a Wolverine something or other on the sideline, the girls on softball, that'd be cool too.
I can talk to you.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to reach out to her, but if you want to, you know, talk to her too and share your enthusiasm to participate in, that'd be cool. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. All right, next we have the audit report by Randy Duer. You have slide three?
Uh huh, no, you guys have us. All right. This is super riveting thing, so I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page here. So first off, I do want to say the audit proves what we knew already, what we've touted for months. If we're on good solid footing, we know what we're doing and we're getting better as we speak. First couple pages of the audit, I just kind of wanted to skip over and really kind of go to page. All right, if you will go to page seven of the audit, please. All right. So basically what this is saying, each one of these, this is the balance sheet on this side, which is our assets liabilities and fund balance and that kind of stuff, right? Each, each column here, you'll see different columns here and then the next page, you'll see the second part of that page, you know, which basically the one that you guys need to worry the most about and make sure you're all on the same page with is that first column, which is general fund, because that's, everything we do is in the general fund. Everything else that's in those other columns are all restricted, all that kind of stuff. We can only do what those are, those are our federal grants, that's our bond fund, that's our modernization funds, those kind of things, our school lunch monies, all that kind of stuff, right? So that first fund is where all of our teachers are, that's everything else we look at. The beauty here, what you want to look at is that unassigning number at the very bottom, that one, seven, one, four, six, eleven. That is a great fund balance for this district to have. And I believe a lot of it was built up when sort of the pandemic came in, we got a lot of students and, you know, it was so big and you got a lot of new revenues coming in for that, so I think the district is in a good spot to weather anything that we have potential issues for in the future. To put that in perspective, Nampa is only five million, we're quite a bit bigger facility. So that's, that's really good. Where we try to make ours at least five percent of our general fund revenues, you guys are quite a bit more than that. So, so you guys really are, you guys are about fifty percent of general fund revenues. So that's, that's actually in a really good position that allows us to do some things that we want to make sure we're doing, but we could potentially weather some of the storm that I'll talk about here a little bit with some of next year's expenses and risks that are happening at the state house this, this spring, this, I guess is the winter, that'll start happening in there. So if you continue on a little bit further, page eleven. Eleven is really a big key one again, or sorry, I said ten, I just, ten is the better one. Ten has that general fund again over there on that page. And you'll see our revenues for the year are three hundred thirty eight thousand dollars. The first part, local taxes, revenues are mostly are supplemental and are toward. The other local revenues are mostly our A S B monies and then the federal, the state revenues are obviously what we get from the state and all the different areas here. Going through all the little different expenses down at the bottom, at the very, very bottom, you'll see the net change in fund balance of three hundred thirty six dollars in the positive. So there's a couple reasons we made, we made money last year, which we were worried about. And one of the reasons is some of the expenses, we kind of kept spending quite a bit when we were worried about our enrollment and our ADA and stuff like that because we knew. And then the state kind of came in and gave us some protection on that, so it kind of helped us solidify that. And so that really worked. And then you'll see, a little bit higher up, you'll see that pupil of school transportation at three hundred thirty two thousand. One of the things Hannah was able to do was to at least negotiate with Harlow's last year to get that contract, they reduced one bus and so it brought that price down about a hundred grand less than what we were expecting to pay. So our new money is still even less than what that expense was, so we're still in a better spot. But that was a really big thing for us to do and so, so we're sitting in a good spot right now. I don't anticipate being able to do that in the future. We know, we honkered down quite a bit, you guys have talked, we had talked to you guys many, quite a bit at times about, you know, making sure that we're, we're looking at this and not going all out, but this year was some of the revenue changes that they made and some of our operational expenses, like I don't see that happening this year per se. But that's a good thing. I'd much rather say that, hey, we made money as opposed to lose money, right? And inevitably too, it doesn't take much when you're not spending every part of your budget. You know, we stopped, we didn't buy any curriculum last year at all, we really didn't spend that much at all, so I think some of this money we're going to utilize some for some one-time expenses for some of the, getting the school back up to where we need to be and that. So those are kind of things we have there. If you wanted, yeah, go ahead.
A lot of that was because of the scary projections that we saw. If we kept spending in the ways that we were spending in the past and what that would have looked like, come this year, had those funding sources not come through. So we were fully anticipating that and we were pleasantly surprised that some of them did come through, others didn't though, and we do know that there are going to be cuts next year as well. We're told to keep a four percent turnover for the next year, just because we're probably not going to be funded for that amount.
Yeah, I can, I can explain that here a little bit after the audit. So really, the other one, if you want to go to page nineteen, and this is a big thing for us, it talks about our long-term gap, okay? And it talks about our year ended about that, so that six thirty twenty six, that's seven hundred eighty five thousand dollars, we've made that payment already. So we make it in September, but it's this, this school year, so it looks like it's this. So we really only have those last eight hundred fifteen and the seven hundred sixty thousand dollar payments left in our bonds. So two years left in our bonds if we're done. So that, that's actually a pretty good thing here, so. And where, potentially where that helps us is in the future when we go to do some more levy and that, that money we get from the state will help drive down the cost of that levy to the patrons, so we no longer have that cost as well. So our supplemental levy will be a lot cheaper for our patrons and that. So that's actually a really good thing. The, the, the part that we're not sure of is what kind of, and this is the stuff, we need to continue to talk about, okay, what are our long-term needs for facilities? Obviously, we don't probably need any building or anything, but we do know there's some pond out here that potentially needs some help and some other things like that that are, you know, very expensive items, that even the money we do have will be paid for that. So I don't think we're at a stage yet where we have to get there, but it is something we'll want to really do some long-term planning on some of this stuff to make sure we know what we want to do here. And then there's potential upgrades if needed with the loan property too, we need to still maintain that at the level we have as well. So those are, those are big ones for us there. If you keep going and towards the very back, this back, starting at page twenty eight, there's a column on those first pages that are basically the, the, they're all, it's like a whole bunch of non-major funds is what they're called. This is the, the data that makes up that last column. So if you want to know any of these crazy special little revenues and that kind of stuff, the crazy federal grants and that, that's where these are located there. Probably not that big a deal because again, most of our spending is all done out of the general fund, so we're, we're, we're pretty much there for that. Any questions actually on the audit itself?
Not the numbers, but we are going to post this to our website.
It's already on the website. Yeah, we have to by law. And then we've already sent this to the state, so we got our fifteen favor. So it wasn't that big a deal, we had you guys approve it because we knew, but in the end, it was, we wanted to get the state to meet, so we had our payment for that.
You do have this as an action after, right? So we'll wait.
I did have one question for you, just a little.
Yeah.
I'm surprised, anybody vocational or technical, the expenditures that are given, I never really found any more than nine thousand dollars of the spend, so.
You are correct.
So my question would be probably more for Miss Baffert than anything. We're running basically two vocational ones, right? Mrs. Thomas's and Mr. Fackrell's, is that correct?
That's correct. So the funding for the physicians comes from the general fund and that's not considered in that piece? It's from the certified teaching. So when you're looking at the nine thousand dollar, you're looking at materials for those programs. Mr. Fackrell, as well as Ms. Thomas, they both receive donations and a lot of that coming from the programs.
And we also got some state funding as well, eight thousand dollars or so, that's one of the back pages as well that.
I see, I see that.
Yep, and so, yeah, so in the end, that was that eighty nine thirty seven and in the general fund side, there was an additional forty six seventeen. So that, that's basically what's on those two. The, the plan is, it's not this year because the supplemental levy didn't have been passed, but it's going for next year, is to beat that up significantly with some additional classes and that, and I know that they've been talking and equipment and that. And I know Stephanie has got some new grants that is also going to help the auto mechanic as well to provide a lot of, lot of product to be in here as well to be able to beat up that program. Thank you. Part of it's going to be facilities too, that we're going to run it too. Did everybody have a boiler?
It's gone.
Is it gone now?
It's gone.
Oh, I did not know, they finally got it out, they may have to rip it, I'm sorry. I should ask this question later. So now we have the space, so now we got some ideas, great, I didn't even know that. Cool.
We just need to upset it and make it usable.
Yep, wonderful, cool, and that adds a little more space. Yep, wonderful. Cool. And that adds a little more space that we can do some stuff. Good. And we do have money in our modernization funds to do that. That's what that money is for, so we need to talk about that and make sure.
So it wouldn't technically. It wouldn't technically be vocational, then it's, you said modernization.
No, so the school modernization funds, we got a million dollars this last year. Remember to be able to do major capital projects.
The facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, and so that money's been sitting there, but if we leave it in there, get interest on it, at that point in time, we can use that interest money to be able to do just maintenance.
Right.
Other than that, anytime you need to use it, for real, you have to actually have a capital project. So that redoing of that project, of that room and doing anything structural or anything like that would be considered that. It would be useful, that we could use that money for. Anything else with that, any kind of maintenance, we would be able to, any of the products inside, we would be able to as well, like the equipment.
Right.
Would that be applicable to any?
Yeah, unfortunately, it does not. The law specifically addresses athletics and it says it cannot be used for athletics. So the only time. Oh, I, I agree, because I'm waiting for that answer and actually question. And so the only time that people have been able to even use that money for anything athletics is like in oxygen, that can also be used as like for PE.
For what?
Like for PE. So anytime that they're using, so if they were to build a second gym or anything like that, then, because you know that's being used for something educational, and that's how they kind of get it in. But like tracks, football fields, baseball fields, softball, any of that stuff is, they wouldn't use that. And it has to be used for cap, capital. It can't be used for anything. So it's more structural and that kind of thing too.
How about like a batting and training facility?
Um, that, that would also need to be, you'd have to be able to prove that has some sort of educational value in order to be able to use.
Would PE department involve?
Uh, I, I would, we'd have to look into it. You're, you're kind of, we're kind of pushing in that side to be able to say that, you know, that they are going to be using it, but it would have to have, show the curriculum and the state would probably flag that one in a heartbeat. Unless we called it something else and it just happened to be used for baseball as well, that we can talk about it otherwise.
So back there on page ten.
Yes.
Under the bond.
Yes.
Nine seventeen. That's what we have available for the next year.
Yeah, so remember, we get, each year, we get a payment for those bonds from our taxes. So in September, we levy, and in January and July, we'll start getting those payments in to be able to make for September's payment. So we can only keep in, into our fund enough for one payment in advance. And so that's one of the reasons we had to make two payments last year, if you remember that.
Well, that's why I was wondering, because this was more than the payment.
Correct. Yeah, that eight, one point eight million dollars, we had to do that emergency meeting, get that in really quick, because the law changed and they reduced the amount of money we could keep in the account for the rates. And so in the past, we would just keep that in there and then we would get interest on it. It would help us in the future for additional things. But now we had to make that payment. We can only keep in there only one year in advance. So we've got enough to be able to make that payment, but we'll get another payment out of our taxes to be able to do the rest of it. So each year in September, we'll get some. We'll get some half of it in January, half of it in, in July.
I have a question, I'm sorry. So we're exploring a few different options for CTE and the modular has come up as potential, and I'm just wondering, it's still on a trailer, it's not real property. Does it qualify for the changes you're talking about, or is it something?
What do you mean, like trying to do what with it?
Like if we were to make some changes to make it, to make it for what we're looking for for the program.
Let's talk later and see exactly what you're trying to do.
Okay.
The, the key is that the modernization money is funny, because it's, it really, it, when they first tried to go and take this money out, the legislators, the whole intention was that we could use it for whatever we wanted, as long as it was maintenance and facilities and all that kind of related, right? As soon as they did the bond, all the bond councils and all the legal guys said, no, this is a capital bond. It's illegal to do what you want to do. In the meantime, they had taken all of our lottery funds, they'd taken all of our other funds to pay for this big bond in the future, right? So that's where we kind of just say, oh, great, so now you've just taken all of its name. In this case, we used to get fifty or sixty thousand dollars for just payments. So now we had to basically take what we don't get from that and just take that out of the general fund just to do our maintenance project to keep the building up. And in that way, by putting it into a capital bond, the way they did, it, it put a lot of restrictions on it. And so now it's like, if you need to, you can't repair our HVAC, you got to replace. So it's kind of one of those things that, you know, you kind of look at those and it's one, one unit isn't necessarily what they're talking about. It's like, you got a project that you're doing a major thing. So your type of thing potentially, yes.
Like a remodel.
We could remodel, we could redo that, but it's, it's a project that costs significant and it's a more.
Okay, but you want a mobile.
Oh, yeah, that doesn't matter at all. The, the structure doesn't matter at all. It's really just the intent of it and how it's going to be used and and additional structures and that kind of stuff, or what it needs to be. Yes. Sorry, I probably answered that too long.
You guys got any more questions?
I have one that's good for you and Frank. So there was way more cost than I know about, so thanks for going through that. To me, it seems fair that, that the revenue that comes in to the program pays those expenses back. So that was my understanding, is that revenue that's coming in, you, you made it sound like the school is going to be able to gain some revenue off of that long-term. But how do you get paid back a hundred grand more than you put into it? Or is there an intention of that? And is there some kind of time limit where then the school starts to set their own fee for the weekend?
You know, Eric, it's always been my intention, once, once the project is, is built and paid for. To answer your first question, the, all the monies that have been spent out there, there's no plan or expectation to pay any of that money back. All the, all the funds that have been provided, have been donated by community members. And nobody has the expectation of being paid back. Those are, those are gifts towards this project. It's always been my intention, once the field project is complete, the only thing that would benefit us at that point would be the maintenance fees to maintain the space. You know, all the gas that I spend on my tractor and mowing the lawn and all that stuff, that's not going to be included in any. So that sort of aspect would be nice to be covered by the school. But all the funds that come in from that venue for years to come, that is for the community and for the school. I mean, I, there's no, there's no expectation of paying you that money back. So that's all overhead, once, once the project is completed. You know, the, the additional phases that are coming out, you know, the bleachers and the backstop, I'm sorry, the scoreboard, those, those are big ticketed items that we're going to need to fundraise for. But once that is complete, for years to come, you know, God willing, that will just continue to be a, a source of revenue for the school district and school.
So is there room in the budget for something like that?
So.
Like if we look at it as, hey, this is an investment.
Yeah, so let me.
Spend twenty grand on a facility now that we can have income that, that pays in, in higher than any other, like we have a wrestling weekend. But that's all we have for that.
Yeah, so let me, let me, I, I can give you experience for Nampa's baseball fields. We have, we have fields on all our, two of ours, and I'm probably getting another one for Nampa High. Generally, our baseball fields don't make additional money. If anything, the money that you bring in for your gate barely pays for your refs and your ops that are there. Especially out here where it takes cost them, because they charge you an hour and a leg to get out here as well. But if you are going to do something like a jamboree or like a big tournament, they're coming in, that's basically what you're talking about doing and those kind of things, then yes, that's a different story. Majority of the time, the costs for our fields and all that kind of stuff are borne by the team itself, and they do a lot of fundraising to keep it up, because there's just so much upkeep with the, the clay and all that stuff and to keep it up. But we haven't seen a lot of extra money to be able to go towards some of that now. That being said, Nampa, when we built our facilities, we basically put up the, the bleachers and all that kind of stuff, the clubhouse and all that kind of stuff. And he's right, the backstop is amazing how expensive those things are. But I mean, we just did another one just for our middle school. It was super expensive. But, but yeah, I mean, I, I can't tell you, I, I'm, I'm just here as kind of the consulting side. I couldn't tell you whether or not we have the funds or not without referring with the superintendent, you guys, what you want to do with it. I, I don't want to say we're broke by any means. I just told you, we just made three hundred grand, right? So it really becomes your priorities and what you think you're going to putting in and put other things. In Nampa, we, we, we went up to supplemental levy to add turf in our baseball fields, lights in our baseball field. That's, that's what we're, we're doing, because in order to keep the cost down for maintenance and that kind of stuff. But that's considerably more than, they just asked me for bleachers, which those are twenty, thirty grand, I think, for depending how big you are and depending if you get multiple sides.
I've got bids for eighty-five hundred.
Oh, okay. So you're, it's not as big as what.
No.
Okay, okay.
Baseball doesn't generally draw the crowds like football, you need the same size.
Yeah, you're not looking for anything over here. You're looking for a little bit smaller. And that, yeah, that's, I mean, potentially, I mean, that, that is not something that's out of the realm.
Could we buy new bleachers during the seasons? Because they don't interfere with each other at all. Like, could we take the football ones, big, nice aluminum ones and drag them over and then they're baseball for the.
That would be, I think, more worth than.
Than worth it?
Yeah. The cost to move them.
Because I just know that football ones are pretty old.
Yeah. Yeah, the ones I, I was looking at was, was a five row with a back end for liability purposes for the school. They have a top rail to keep them enclosed, safe. And I think there were five run, fifty-some odd people per, and it was for two. Because generally you have, baseball doesn't draw the big crowds that football does and basketball. So you wouldn't need to buy such a large venue for seating as you do for baseball. Tournaments, yeah, you're going to do, a lot of people.
They just go down the line.
Yeah, exactly. They bring their lawn chairs, they like to sit along the fence lines and majority of people are dispersed on, on those sides. So I wouldn't spend the extra money to have a, a bigger seating format, because I just don't think it's needed, but.
It, it makes sense what you're saying as well. I would agree with you.
The tournaments are going to generate a bunch of money. Having played a lot of softball tournaments in my earlier years, there's, there's teams that do their own tournaments, there's.
Softball, yeah, softball has a bunch. It's amazing how much softball brings in. As my line's true, we did a huge softball tournament as well. Baseball, it seems like it revolves around, it's not around the sports teams, it's around about Legion and some of those. We haven't really seen a lot of the tournaments come in to our district, but that doesn't mean it doesn't.
Travel ball. Yeah, travel ball and American Legion ball.
Yeah, I was going to say, we have.
They draw big crowds and they, they can raise a lot of money.
Yep. So this is how I remember when the baseball field was proposed to the board, is that there'd be a booster club formed for the baseball program and that they would do the fundraising. Any, any money that came in would go to that club to maintain, for the maintenance and everything, or to buy new things. But I feel like we didn't really have a commitment to, to adding more from the school at that time. Because I do feel like we were real tight on funds and I realize that we just asked, we just asked for a levy because things were tight. And then it is good news to hear that we have three hundred thousand over from last year, but I still feel like it's, it's tight. Like you don't run at zero, you have to have some flexibility there, because the funds change all the time. So. I mean, I think those are decisions that Hannah makes.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll talk to Hannah and I'll get, we get back to you and kind of see what you guys think. Yeah, I, I don't think it sounds unreasonable by any means, but I, I can't sit up here because it's not, I'm not the finance guy to basically say, I make decisions for you guys, I just give you advice.
We are in a much more comfortable spot, though, where something like that is something we could realistically consider now.
Yep.
Last year, we weren't in the same spot. So, yeah, I'm happy to report that it could be a consideration.
And, and you're also, what was your estimate on the scoreboard?
Kind of middle of, I mean, it varies, but I, I kind of priced one out, kind of middle of the road, but it's very functional and still a little decent by eighty-five hundred.
So you're looking about maybe no more than twenty grand basically total.
For both?
For both.
Yes, correct.
Would the scoreboard run toward a generator? Or would you have to have power?
We would, I mean, you could obviously wire it to run off of a generator, but we would like to pull power from one of the existing buildings on the, on the far side of the campus to, to run right down that access road that Stephanie was talking about earlier. That's where we ran our power for the irrigation system, that's run parallel to that road, and pull power from one of those close buildings and.
Yeah, it doesn't take a ton of power.
No.
That's through Daktronics. Pardon? That's through Dak, Daktronics?
I'm not familiar with that. That's one of my scoreboard.
Oh, no.
That's what our reader board is, Daktronics and a lot of other school boards.
Any other questions, Frank?
I'd just like to say, congratulations on the audit, you guys, on the transparency. I mean, it'd be easier to say we're going to hide something, maybe in the past, I was, but it's not being that here.
The biggest goal is to get you guys in a financial way, so when we have these questions that you feel comfortable, you can do it. If that makes sense. The last thing we want to do is like, we're losing money and we have to scrape, and that's not. And, and then when the supplemental levy question gets up, is this more for, hey, these are the extra things we're doing as opposed to just making the entity? If that makes sense. So, which is a lot of supplemental was to keep things running the way that we're running now. It is, and then I think we're, we're in a good spot now where we're, we've really kind of hunkered down and now we can kind of look and see some different things. And those are some of the strategies we'll have to do and that kind of, so.
And those other areas of the levy, now with CTE, was a big piece of that, so.
And, and remember, like, the biggest thing we haven't done in this district for a while is really upgraded the technology. So that's the other thing we're, we're working on. I'm working with, there's E-ray funds, which are the funds that the Fed will give. We've never taken advantage of quite there, the category two funds, we haven't taken advantage of that, which we've been just basically pushing off, getting about eighty grand from the federal government to be able to do stuff. And that's basically to re-cable this entire building with new wires, which will allow us to do additional things like upgrade this type of stuff, upgrades and get rid of those type of things, yes. And we've already got, I showed Hannah some of the things that are out there. And those are the things we're, we're also trying to do is really, which will affect and help the entire campus, get a better wifi, get everything. And those are the things that will, the supplemental levy is going to do as well. So that's, that's going to help a lot.
We're already implementing some of those changes. The firewall is just rebuilt by Microtech Bay. And we have internet that stopped four times this week, that it was a few weeks ago. So that's huge, because as you all know, we've really struggled with tech issues. And it all kind of piled on at once last year, so.
Ask a question?
Yes.
Could any of those funds be implemented towards your security for the school as far as comps? Because it's my understanding from Deputy Gomez that he can't even communicate with Sheriff's Dispatch inside the facility here. Should there be an emergency that arises, it has to be done from his vehicle outside, and that's not very practical. I didn't know.
As in his radio doesn't work in the building?
Correct.
So, so part of this is similar to the same issue we had with our, it just, the way they built this building is the cement's on the inside. And so, so everything is, you know, when we put all the, the hotspots, remember that, we had to actually put it built, because we couldn't get through the walls, I'm sure. Yeah, even when I got in my computer in that little office, I, I was next to nothing, my Verizon, so.
Mr. Truby, if you have time afterward, I'd love to chat with you more about that.
And, and the hope is, when we re, re-cable plant, we'll also be able to put up more surveillance cameras and that kind of stuff with that. That's kind of the hope with all of it.
All right, let's move on to.
I think we need an action item to approve it.
Well, it's, it's coming out.
Oh, okay, great.
All right, Miss Baffert.
Okay, I will be stretching this, so if you don't want to get blinded, you should just rearrange a bit.
I am going to the couch.
What?
It does seem darker in here than usual, does it? Apologies. Turns out this is difficult to do in the dark.
Put the light back on.
You can turn the lights on.
Yeah, that may be helpful. Thank you. Yes, folks has rearranged this room a little bit and it looks great in here.
Ready?
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, sir. Okay. We've got a lot of great things that have happened since my last official board report, given that last month, we talked pretty exclusively about the levy. So just a couple of things that have happened as far as ball sports, we've had some wrap-ups with football and volleyball. Wrestling and basketball have kicked off and some maintenance on the fields for both softball and baseball. Uh, wrestling and basketball have kicked off and some maintenance on the fields for both softball and baseball, as you heard from Mr. Truby. And softball has also gotten some new turf that was laid out there and it looks really good as well. Again, if you haven't seen the baseball field, it is incredible what they have accomplished. And I really want to commend the, the whole team that has put in all that effort, it's really incredible. And a testament to the community and how much y'all care about the kids here. Some committees that have been going on, we've got the attendance review committee, it's an ongoing one, as well as MDT, multi-disciplinary team. This is for those high-risk students or high-needs students. The policy review committee has also been working away at reviewing some policies, which we'll talk about later in this meeting. Some activities that have happened, there have been multiple field trips, including, uh, one that just happened where high school students went to Boise State and the Boise Art Museum. They had a lot of fun there. And, um, Red Ribbon Week, this is also currently Bully Prevention Week. We've, um, we have lots of people come in for Red Ribbon Week, we've had some different activities, like, like spirit wear, that sort of thing for Bully Prevention Week and classroom activities. We've been connecting with our partners, on Veterans Day, we had our annual Veterans Day Assembly, which was really wonderful. The Boise Exchange Club has also made an appearance, talk about that a little bit more later, as well as, uh, Pay It Forward, we've been connecting with them. Boise County Sheriffs, oh, I put the Boise Exchange Club on there twice. Um, Rotary Club, you know, the school district of course, and the Children's Museum of Idaho. Some things that we've accomplished, there have been staff and student surveys that have gone out for the purposes of accreditation, as well as community schools. Um, the big one, of course, is passing that replacement supplemental levy, which is really going to help our district two years into the future. So as Mr. Dewey mentioned earlier, that does commence at the beginning of next school year. So it starts, it starts at the beginning of next school year and then it goes for two years and it's five hundred thousand dollars each year. We also now are classified as school-wide title and what this means is that we can have school-wide interventions for kids who are showing that they need some improvement in, um, either literacy or math, which is a really great opportunity for our school. Previously, we had a targeted assistance, which is kindergarten through fifth grade. So this really opens up a lot of doors for us, having this new classification. We've been securing funds through donations and grants, we'll talk about that later. And as always, lots of state and federal reports for me. Some cool things that have been happening on campus with pictures, uh, district, or off-campus in this case, district drama competition. Our kids just competed, Kia Loveland, she took eleven students to, uh, to the drama competition. And you can see their second place plaque there, it's up the office, it's beautiful, it's shiny, and I do recommend that you take a look at it. Replacement supplemental levy, of course, I touched on that earlier. On October sixteenth, the Children's Museum of Idaho visited and they brought their mobile planetarium. Erin Brown leads the team there and you can see her on the right with her assistant and I apologize, her name's escaping me at the moment. But this was a pretty incredible experience. I got to join the kids and we flew through space faster than light years and it was wild, really wild. And all of the elementary students who were present, um, on that day got to see it. So we mentioned some field trips and fun, uh, Boise Art Museum, you can see there on the right. I added this picture of Mr. McCormick, this was a mushroom that a student actually brought in and they got to dissect in class and make slides of. I wish I could remember the scientific name and the biology teacher in, uh, in me is, is kicking myself right now, but I can't recall it.
I think it's fungi for both the teacher and the mushroom.
Yes, fungi, love that. Boise County Sheriffs, um, like I mentioned, they came out, this is, uh, I believe it was during Red Ribbon Week. So Deputy Gomez, our SRO is there on the left, Deputy Reader on the right, and then, um, the pooch, I think her name was Sage. Is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you remember, well done.
Yes.
Yeah, super, super sweet. That was pretty awesome and some of the kids got to meet Sage, walk around and watch her work. And Sage is a, a drug dog with a department. It's kind of cool, they do random visits, um, all around the county. On ten thirty, we had our Halloween parade and here are some of the fabulous costumes from down in the elementary hall. Just a few, yeah, a little snapshot, this is always such a bucket filler to see the kids dressed up and happy and it's a good time. And then the next day on Halloween, we participated, um, three of us, including Ms. Corn, Deputy Gomez and myself, we participated in the crouch trunk retreat and we got to decorate, um, the truck bed of the sheriff's deputy's truck, right there. And hand out free books and candy, lots of candy to go with the books and some other cool stuff. I wanted to give some special thank yous to a couple of different places and one of those is the Idaho Career Ready Students Program Council. We were just awarded forty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars for our automotive maintenance program. So this is for our CTE auto program and that contribution is going to make a huge difference, um, this upcoming year and getting that space outfitted in the way that it needs to be and that the students deserve. So we're really excited to see this, to see these funds we use to do something really cool. That was a pretty big deal, they call it a micro grant, but honestly, doesn't seem so micro to me, it's a big chunk of change. Thank you also to the Boise Exchange Club and in this photo you can see Rick and Jim from the Boise Exchange Club. They donated twenty-eight hundred dollars for handwriting curriculum to meet the new requirements of SB ten forty-four. And I can see them generously handing the check over there. And this was really neat because it was on Veterans Day. Pay It Forward, uh, I do wanna highlight on the left there, some of their, uh, recent contributions. So at the top, you can see the forty-eight hundred dollars for middle and high school activities and that's also the giant check out. Ms. Corn and I are holding right there. And, um, they also contributed five thousand dollars for the wrestling program to support that. And then you can see some other contributions there, club sports, well, it's not directly a school sport, right? Um, it still impacts our students in a big way. That was really great to see, uh, the Christmas wish tree, thousand dollars for that program. It's really incredible to see what they're able to donate. And it's also, in my opinion, the best thrift store around, including all of Boise area. It really, yeah. We're very lucky. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Spafford. Next, we're gonna move on to new business items. First item is to, um, consider the twenty twenty-five audit. Is there any more discussion about that?
No, I'll make a motion to approve also the twenty twenty-five audit.
A motion in a second, on favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Next is a new club, it's the Garden Valley Youth Volunteers and Ms. Corn's gonna talk about that.
Hi, everyone, so, uh, I have presented to you, it should be in your packet. It is policy three two two five F, which is a form that goes with three two two five. We are coming to you asking to develop a new school-sponsored club. It's not there.
It didn't print out, those are just ones that are to be amended.
Oh, okay, so it would have been in your packet, that would have been the digital packet. Um, I have Maisie Nifayson with me as well tonight and, um, she's a student that will be able to talk a little bit more about it as well. So, um, through some needs assessments that, um, we did this past year, as well as this past, um, this fall, just a few months ago. And some personal experiences with local businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, going through our scholarship, um, season that we do with our seniors every year, some big needs came about. We are seeing quite the drop in volunteer hours, um, just basically, um, everyone, from adults and kids. But, um, it was coming very apparent, um, when I was going through the scholarships. Um, I think part of it is just they're not logged, but also that, um, it's, there's not as much being done. Um, at the local level, uh, we had some businesses and the chamber that came to me, um, with some frustration that our school is, and our students rather, that are, um, looking for donations, um, to run some of our programs, are coming for handouts and not, um, able to really do more than that and they're not seeing more than that. They'd like to see more contribution for the efforts and, um, they're more than willing to donate, but they'd like to see effort in return. Um, and then if we look at like, um, our local Pay It Forward that, um, is run by all volunteers that gives us some very generous donations throughout the school year, um, they too are looking for volunteers and, um, it's a great platform for students. So what I'm coming to you for is that this policy requires us to have a motion made for a school-sponsored club. We're looking to start Garden Valley Youth Volunteers. It would be a platform for all high school students, um, and community members to be able to tell us what they're needing and just basically the organization of, so it would be student-led, I would be the sponsor from the school that would, um, assist with that. And, um, the platform that we're looking to develop would track, um, hours as well, so students don't have to do that separately. And, um, they would be able to sign up for different volunteer opportunities that are brought to us. Um, this could look like, um, even just things that we can identify, like, um, usually in the fall, the middle fork's pretty rough as far as the trash on the sides, you've had all summer of people going to the dump, right? And so, um, this is, this umbrella of a community school would be where this would originate. And then as that federal grant ends, it would then be with the school, just like community school is. So, um, we would have road signs, we would have all the gloves and all the vests and everything. I can use the community school budget to purchase some of these consumables. Signs from the transportation department we can pick up, but we will also have sandwich boards and things that would read, Blue Greens at Work or, um, you know, Garden Valley Youth Volunteers and, uh, please choose caution, you know, just to make sure everybody knows what's going on. But to also make sure that our kids, that, that it's recognized that they are giving back and that they are doing things um, that a lot of time go unseen and so, um, anyways, so there's that, there's like the Fall Festival that the chamber would like help with. There's winter activities in December they would like help with. Um, so that's just kind of an explanation of why we're going about doing it and, um, what we're looking to gain from it. Maisie, did you wanna add anything? Please, please.
Hi, everyone, I am Maisie Nifayson, I'm the, um, Student Body Vice President and also someone who's been working with Stephanie, which is amazing, at helping potentially create this new club. Um, I'm, first off, I'd like to say I'm really grateful for the levy having been passed and the community members that made that possible. With that, I feel like is a great opportunity, um, as well as like what Stephanie said about like, not necessarily like issues, but people coming forth and asking for some like, give back to the community in a sense. And I feel like this is a great opportunity for students to do that, as well as to build leadership skills and teamwork skills. And as well as like a selflessness, not always expecting something in return, even though you're putting in your effort for it. And I feel like this is a great opportunity. Um, this club used to exist, um, when I was talking to Stephanie, but it did kind of diminish and so did like the drive to help others and kind of volunteer in this community. And I feel like it's something that would be so beneficial, especially with like Pay It Forward, who's been a consistent donor for this school for as long as I've been here and well beyond, like well for that. Um, so being able to help them even would be great. Um, I feel like as a student, speaking for students, it's a great way to set up for future success. It's something that a lot of colleges like to look for with leadership skills and a lot of students, um, in other schools are even required to commit, uh, complete a certain number of, uh, community service hours before actually graduating. And, um, also like, so college applications it looks good on, but also building a strong work ethic with it. Um, a lot of students do have jobs, but I feel like this gives them rather more than seeking a reward, that feeling of satisfaction of the betterment of something bigger than themselves, which I feel like is really important to instill in the younger generations and us leading by that example as high schoolers now to teach the middle schoolers and even elementary kids to continue that. And, um, yeah, I think that it's something great as adolescent individuals to work towards. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, my high school.
We have a lot of students come in and present things, I think that was the best one.
My high school did require that and it was very beneficial, I mean, I think, e- even, cause it was a lot of extrinsic, extrinsic motivation, right? For the high schoolers in my district, because you had to do it to graduate.
Yeah.
This would be intrinsic, I'm not saying I don't think that it's not a great thing to have for graduation requirement, but, yeah, I, I love the idea.
Yeah, and so this, um, kind of, um, initiative is part of the action plan that I have for a community school. So that's, it's all wrapped in together with our college and career readiness. Um, I would expect people to have, you know, our students to have good experiences where they can identify things that they might like or things that they don't like, um, to, also to develop a heart for service. And so whether that's something they want to continue to be in the service industry or not. Um, and then the other thing that I just wanted to, um, you know, bring to everyone is, is just that, like, my own experience when it comes to intrinsic, when my own kids, um, I was always like, oh, don't, we, we don't need to log anything, we don't want to do that. Like, you just need to just give more yourself. And so, um, when it came time for my youngest to do his scholarships, he was looking at me like I was a fool. And so, um, and it just didn't come to, um, it didn't come to mind that it, that he really truly needed to be tracking it. And so, um, I think it would be great and, um, I think it would be a big service to them. As far as it comes to the district itself and moving forward, our senior projects will be having some changes over the next two years at the state level and this will be a requirement. Um, the partnerships that we can make internally, um, we've got student council and National Honor Society. I would expect to have a crossover, you know, these students participate in lots of areas and so they would be doing, you know, participating in both. And again, this platform would allow us to track it, um, over multiple years, so anyways, uh, you guys have any questions?
I have a comment, I went to the game night the other night and Maisie, you were working there and helping, was that just a volunteer time as well?
Yeah.
Appreciate that, we had a good time and kids really enjoyed it and I, I, I thought that this is fantastic that you're there, uh, to, to help. So thank you for that, I, I think this whole club sounds great. Uh, my only concern is Stephanie, you're like the most important person for me and the school. Yeah, you are, and so I, 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 I don't love the idea of you piling more stuff on top of yourself, as long as, as long as you feel like you can do this. as long as, as long as you feel like you can do this.
Yeah, and so.
Because I think this will work great if you're, it'll help, but if you're not, that's why it kind of fizzled.
Right. And just so you know, it was like twenty years ago, I've just been here a long time, so that's how long it was. What I can say is that I'm working on a volunteer drive right now to bring in more volunteers. Community schools is needing volunteers, but also this platform, I already have two community members that are interested in this being like their purpose with volunteering here in the school. So that is, I would expect to have other adult volunteers that are participating with the kids at certain activities in a sense, that I cannot be at all of them, and so I'm looking to build a team with that. The other thing is, is that it's a little bit selfish on my part. I have other programs that I'm, that I am developing for adults and for drug prevention, things like that, so that parents can really be taking part in this, these activities, they need to have their kids watched. And so I would expect to be using them myself as well, so that I could have, you know, childcare or movies, things like that on these certain nights, so that the parents don't have anything else to worry about and can participate as we would, you know, want them to. So, bringing in tall cop says stop, R O, S R O, I mean, there's lots of different things that we're looking at right now to develop that program out, so.
Kind of like what the Outreach Center used to be, that kind of thing?
Kind of, but this would be for the younger kids. So the volunteer group would be watching the younger, watching their kids, so that they can participate in our parent-level material, because we can't have like our, during our, we, we brought in a presenter for fentanyl, it was from Idaho, fentanyl education. Again, it was just high school material, couldn't be for younger, right, same type of thing. He would come in for the adults, higher level material than the high schoolers were getting, and then we would need the kids to be being in a different space. And so I would expect better participation in that if I can have childcare at the same time we have the other. Now, as far as OC and like outreach, with community school, we're looking at doing open door hours. Those would be like one or two days out of the week where high schoolers could come and kind of just chill until practice. Maybe they have to have, maybe they just need a place to rest. Maybe they're gonna, you know, be in a safe place for them to kind of just be with their peers, or really anything like that. So, we're just looking for two or three hours for that. That's another thing that they can participate in themselves, but they can also, you know, help if needed, so, yeah.
Why, why just high school, not middle school?
I just have them at different times.
Okay.
So, yeah.
But there will be service from high schoolers as well?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're looking at. We were just trying to determine what days and how to flip it, so that I have staffing for it, because again, I can't be at all of them, so, yeah.
So for this club, you're more just going to be compiling, it sounds like, potentially? Like you'd be compiling a list and doing outreach during the day, all that kind of stuff, and then dispersing information as far as what volunteer opportunities there are?
And we would have, like, it is student-driven, so that would be just like a student advisory. We could develop it as a council, or we could develop it even as a student board, that would help make those decisions. It just really depends on how they lead it from here, we just need this approved prior to taking action. It would be definitely undertaking as far as how much time they have, but I want it to be beneficial to them in means of like gathering information, but also at the community level that we can, you know, kind of the manpower can be dispersed, and they can work either in partners or as whole large groups, whatever it is.
And I'm happy here to there are other adults than you that are willing to help with supervision.
Yes.
That's, that's good, and it's important.
And I would expect that as the kids are participating, that I would see more of their parents as well.
Yeah.
Once they know that the kids are interested, we start to see more parents being interested in volunteering, so. Thank you guys for bringing these.
Sure.
So is this a club where people would sign up? Or, to me, I would like to see every student in our school be part of this club. And maybe it doesn't seem like volunteering, but maybe the future, because hey, our classes all go through this today. Is that overwhelming, like have everybody involved and track it all for every student, or?
I don't think it's overwhelming as much as that, like, I mean, I think it's something that the class instructor would have to have time in their schedule, obviously, but that it would be much better for us to be able to identify those needs here in the building. If we were to be moving about the community a lot more, that would be much more difficult. I did see a school, it was Notice, that has a really great program going there with their community school, and one of their classes is a leadership class, and their leadership class does do volunteer hours. But again, that's outside of regular school time too, and a lot of them wear multiple hats, like student council president, or in National Honor Society, or those kind of things, so. But I think that it definitely is a, kind of like, I would love to see it as a movement, like where you start to see more kids being influenced by the kids that are participating, and the more work to do it.
And what about Stephanie, like utilizing, if you had your older students be mentoring to some of the, like, high school mentors, middle school, middle school, like at an appropriate level, middle school mentors, elementary at an appropriate level, for kind of entering into that, and as they graduate up, they take on more of a leadership role, a bit of a trickle-down effect? Because it sounds like this is going to also support your other programs.
Yes, absolutely.
Right, so it's like, even though it's an additional thing, it's like a hub of how to like source help in things that need volunteers, it's just an organized way to source those people.
Yeah, and then to track some of that's beneficial to our grads as well.
Yeah. Because these things have definitely happened in the school before, like, I had, I think, three different older classes coming to my classrooms.
Like for buddies?
For buddies, and then also back when Ryan Wessels was teaching, he had, I think he had a leadership class that they came into my classroom every week and helped with whatever. Usually I have to work directly with students, so that way they all got interaction with the kids, because I liked, I liked that. So, it's just, yeah, a great way to, like you said, make sure that kids are able to turn that into colleges, like there is that little bit of benefit for them later on down the road.
Yeah, the other thing I was talking to Maisie about a couple of days ago too, is that we do see students that leave campus early. They're going to do work, they're going to do homework, they're, you know, family early. What I suggest is that they actually volunteer that last hour, so they wouldn't be getting credit or anything like that. They could still be, we could still run it just like a checkout, I checked out, I'm gonna volunteer down in kindergarten for the next two hours. And so because they're not earning anything from that, they can then lock it as volunteer hours. So anyways, I think that that is a great opportunity and an easy platform, you know, it's like right here for them to continue without having to go anywhere or rate more standards or shit, yeah.
I would just like to tell you that I think this is a fabulous idea, it's wonderful. Couple of questions. One is, like, one thing we really need is litter pickup.
Yeah.
All over, not just Middle Fork, but everywhere.
Absolutely, yeah.
I've been talking with the folks at Boise County, because they have a community service where, you know, people who have misdeemed or.
Oh, nice.
But they're getting a lot, you know, they get a lot of requests, so it might be good to coordinate with them.
Yeah.
Because you might be able to supply help that they need and vice versa. And then the other question I had is, what happens, say, like you're out on Middle Fork or you're on Bayside, and there are these places that can be steep and whatever, is there insurance coverage and things like that, if somebody gets hurt, is there need that? Or is somebody, say, say you have a volunteer project to help a senior with painting in their house, or, you know, cleanup, or whatever, is, is that a consideration?
Just because, I mean, I have like in, in this, this is a risk management plan that I had to produce for the board, and it goes over like PPE and things like that, that they might need.
Right.
Adequate shoes, that kind of thing, but we will have to have some limitations. Like I would expect that we wouldn't put kids up on ladders to clean windows, right, or anything like that. They wouldn't be able to, it couldn't be like an organized defense and us not to have signage, that kind of thing. And so I would definitely, you know, the, and there's permission slips that we'll have to have, that we know that there's inherent risks that are involved, but nothing that is beyond what we would typically consider ourselves to be, you know, acceptable.
Right.
So.
But your athletes could do things that, say, you know, people like me who are over active age.
Yeah.
Can't do it, and that, I mean, that'd just be so awesome, so.
Yeah.
A little support.
Yeah, and so they talked about like, you know, that they, that, you know, lifting things that are, you know, beyond what they should be lifting, things like that, so we'll have all of that right now for them. I also have noted that we'll have first aid kits with every group that goes out, that kind of thing. So, and cell phones with adults, it does go over like, what are we gonna do if there is an emergency? Calling parents, calling EMS services, that kind of thing, and so. It is kind of, it's pretty thorough here, but it doesn't include the permission slips and that.
It's good, thank you.
Stephanie, would you be able to use in-house, like Ms. Thomas's equipment to make the signs and stuff? Or could you use her club name, or like her program to help with that too?
I believe so. So, I would just need to laminate it. What I've been looking at is like sandwich boards and things like that, but not the signage part of it. And so, she can either charge me, which I gave to the grant, or I can buy the material for her to print on. So we even have material in me, yeah. Yeah, I would still purchase like the reflective vests if we need those and that kind of thing, yeah.
There might again be something in County that could be a resource for you, because they have, I think they have the stuff, they just don't have the people.
Right, and I know that.
You've got the people and not the stuff, so it's great, Emily.
Yeah, and the other good thing is that if I can, if I do this now under our federal grant, before the federal grant's over with, we retain all of the materials. And so whether it be, you know, whatever we purchased for that to make this club possible, and to make, you know, some of these volunteer projects possible, so.
More questions? No, I'll make a motion to approve the new club, Garden Valley Youth Volunteers. Also. Yeah, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Could we pause for just a minute, because Maisie has homework, so she was gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
She's in my.
Great job, Maisie.
Thank you very much.
So first project is painting the cliche.
Oh, that's my first one, I was like, this would be so precious for that too.
Yeah, I actually planned that as well.
I wonder if it's an A S B, but is, I own. I mentioned that during our presentation. Because I have a taste for my own, so.
All right. Moving on to policies. Just before we get started on that, I just wanted to say thank you to the Policy Committee. Wow, I'm impressed at how much work went into this, and I think when I started two years ago, it seemed like there was an awful lot of policies that, there was inconsistencies or issues, and it seems like every time I go through this, it gets a lot better. This was a huge step this time, so. Who's on that committee?
The difference, but consistently, Janelle, and then I review consistently also. Angela, Allison.
Okay.
Thank you. Which if you don't know that, about twenty history, it lies within the details, yeah. Everybody has their own history, but, yeah.
It seems like we've come a long ways with these. All right, first one is policy twenty-six oh five P, instruction, middle school requirements procedure. Do you guys have any questions on that? Pretty important discussion.
Other than just for adding required volunteer hours to the school hours.
An alteration that was made was that, previously we had social studies outlined as a year, and that was an inconsistency, so we just changed it to a semester-long course in middle school that's required.
I actually crossed off that it was required, so I apologize, so if that's the case, we can keep it in there, I can just circle them.
It's not required by the C.
Okay, so did you want it required in this?
As outlined in the draft policy.
Janelle, would you like us to do a motion for each one of these individually, or can we just incorporate our comments in one motion at the end?
Whatever you feel is.
Okay, let's just do it at the end. Yeah, let's just look at all of that. Okay. Next one, amended three thousands for students, the entrance placement and transfer. Do you have comments on that one? What's this one about? Transferring students and requirements for letting them enter, come and enroll in our school. We're making it easier? Or just keep it up with code or something? There's a lot added to it, but I guess who's behind what?
Most of this one was keeping up with code, clearly.
And what we talked about last, wasn't a lot of it just like giving you guys more verbiage as far as like allowing or not allowing a student if they had some kind of like expulsion or criminal record?
Persistently, they go to school, yeah.
Okay.
Just be more explicit.
Yeah. Always added a lot of legal references too, that must have taken a lot of time. Thank you.
Okay, no comments on that one? Next one is amended thirty thirty, students, part-time attendance and dual enrollment.
We stick thirty ten.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker.
Thirty ten, I'm sorry. Yeah, we have thirty ten. Sorry, yeah, let's do thirty ten P, thirty ten, students' open enrollment, and amended thirty ten P, students' open enrollment procedure.
And this is a similar one as well, right, Ms. Speaker?
Yes, yeah, a lot of the recommendations for the, the new legal agency, they use them from the ICA, and how policies.
Just to bring students that in, or denying them. Some of them work, well, after other schools.
Yeah, specifically, those who cite. We can talk more about that.
Any discussion on that one? That one's really overhauled, wasn't it?
Yeah.
All right, now let's move on to thirty thirty, students, part-time attendance and dual enrollment. Is that, is that second, or that first paragraph, the third line, yeah? Additionally, the third paragraph, additionally, show the option of joint enrollment in a regular public school, an alternate school. Does this, is this, is this us saying that kids that are homeschooled and have an alternate school can also be part of our school, or is this college classes that our students are taking, the dual enrollment? What does this refer to?
Not college. Yeah, it's.
Like part-time students?
Talking about the evolving landscape with homeschool communities and then online schools. So if there is a student who wants to enroll in an online school and take a couple of classes there, they could also enroll.
Okay, so it just makes it easier for that?
Yeah, and again, this one was just getting back to being more explicit about that with the change.
Okay. So I do have a question about that. So if they do enroll, is it just whoever has the most? Whoever they're taking the most classes from, that they get the credit for enrollment?
It can be split by a percentage, so it doesn't necessarily have to be that. We ran into some difficulty with this last year though, where online schools were, and students were enrolled with the full amount, the full ADA, but, yeah.
with the full amount, the full ADA, but yeah.
So. And as far as the paragraph, the ICA, basically all it's stating is that you guys will just do what is legally required, not necessarily more than that, just.
Although we do, I mean, we do accommodate. So for example, Project Patch, I assume there.
Yes.
And.
Needs help with creating an interior. Okay. That makes sense.
So does the new voucher program change any of this? Like if they, we see vouchers for homeschooling, could they still be dual enrollment here?
Yes, but it would be available now.
No, no, actually, no.
Is it all or nothing?
If they've taken any credits at all with this, it locks anything away from them. So it's, that's one part of the bill that they got in, that they, they don't get any money if they take anything from us.
Okay. Same correct.
Yeah, cause we, we went over that in our district with a couple of things too.
Yeah.
Does that need to be mentioned in here, do you think, or just?
That's a good safeguard though.
It, it's one that you might want to explain to somebody that's homeschooled. Hey, by doing this, you know, you risk this. It's really just a courtesy. It's not a requirement.
Interesting. I didn't know that.
Any other questions on thirty thirty?
Is thirty thirty one like continuation of kind of the same idea? It's just that interaction with non-public school, student, like homeschool students in our school? But this is just setting requirements for them?
Uh, thirty thirty one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the extra curriculum curriculars.
Is this like a brand new policy? Is that what this is? Cause all yellow? So if I'm reading thirty thirty one correctly, it's, it's pretty much if a student is not sports, well, they want to participate in non-academic school activities, which is sports. Then they have to have grade proficiency. But I'm not sure who's measuring it. It says that we have, that we will make it available to them to take the state tests and understandize tests, but not required to, right?
Correct. So.
Who's in charge of checking that? The athletic director or?
If it were a homeschooler, it would be reported by the parent.
Okay.
Who's giving the homeschooling. So they would, they would report it before the game, just like our students who are in the building have grade checks.
So that's what, and that's already happening right now, but it's just.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on thirty thirty one?
Um, ask, we'll go back to sort of the thirty, three zero one zero P.
Yeah.
Question from a special. Uh, number three, back to the grounds for denial of application.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Well, thirty, uh, thirty ten P, the grounds for denial of application, number three. It feels like the parent guardians disclosing if the applicant is having a long-term issue or adjudication offenses and the reporting. You know, it doesn't list, uh, is that just up to the parents to report, or is there some sort of reporting procedure you receive here when you receive an application for a woman?
It's, it's a question that's asked on the enrollment, I believe.
Good. That's my question.
So, so it is self-reported, but, um, it also comes with the student files. If there has been anything that's occurred in the school. The disciplinary record is included.
Any questions?
Great. So when we're doing this thirty 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 one policy, you know, last year and a little bit this year, we had, there weren't, let's say, incidents. We had parents asking about, hey, can my homeschool kid go to the prom? How do I make that possible? Did we clean that up? Can we clean that up with this? We have a clear policy of how we do it. So.
Like a process, a process cleaner? I think it's getting cleaner and clearer each time we have an event.
Okay.
Where you relay something didn't work. Apologies. So, yes, yes. The procedure has remained the same. Um, it's, it's the same with our students. They have to have a permission slip. And the permission slip is really for liabilities. If there's a medical emergency that happens during a dance or whatever activity, we need to know who to contact immediately. We need that information, right? So those sorts of questions are asked on the permission slip, and our students have to do that too. It's not a different requirement. And as far as the permission slip goes.
My question is just, how do we make it smooth? Cause though that parent, when, when she talked about it with me in my district, she just said there wasn't anything in the policy that she defined, and it was handbook stuff.
Yeah, it was.
And I was like, okay, I agree. And the handbook acts like policy when, when it's not. But do we have, we're, we're changing the policy right now for that degree. Can we just add it to the policy?
I think it should stay procedural. So that's kind of the difference between what the board does, what Hannah does. She, she does the procedural stuff, and we just keep that as the same handbook. It doesn't feel like it should be a policy.
Yeah, you know, we could have it in policy. We could just keep it in the procedure. The nice thing about the procedure is it can involve every year without you guys having to look over it.
Okay.
And it's.
But that's what thirty thirty one is all about, right? It's just.
Yeah.
Homeschool students, none.
And I see, I see what you're saying.
Like a dance.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Like sports. Okay.
I'm having trouble because your voice is about an octave lower than normal.
Yeah. He's a little under the weather, isn't he?
It's only a sixth.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I understand Eric's question too about the sports, like if our enrolled student misses school that day, they're not allowed to go to the game if they were sick or whatever. But how do we monitor those things for homeschool students that are on our teams? It is hard to make a fair comparison there.
It is.
I guess we just have to take their word for it.
Well, they have to.
They have to sign off. Yeah. Same with grades and everything. Yeah.
Yeah. And there is, you know, a, a time window of a few days, like maybe two days before the dancer activity, when they're like ordering catering, right? Because we have to get those orders in. So there are limitations. There's always going to be those sorts of limitations when you're looking at these kinds of activities. But, um, right now, we endeavor to have the same expectation of our homeschoolers as we do of our currently enrolled students. It does have to be self-reported though.
Okay. Kind of jumped around a little bit, but I think we're back to thirty eighty?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Students, non-resident student attendance. And a lot of this one got.
Excluded.
Yeah, excluded. I do have some questions about the, the part that's remaining though, that districts, district students attending a school in another state or out-of-state students attending here. When would that occur? What would be? Reading through this, it almost made me think of like schools that were on the state border or something like that.
Right.
You know?
Shared custody maybe?
Could be.
Shared custody.
Yeah.
Yeah, how does this one work? I'm not sure I understand it. So I know a kid that went and played hockey back, back East, and he comes back in the summer. Nope. So is that, is that kind of thing? So does he stay a student here? Is that what, is that what this is saying? They're non-resident?
Yes, uh, right as a transfer would exceed the limits of attendance. So if the criteria are met, then they would be.
So this is just expressing when it could be possible for an out-of-state student to attend here. Unlikely that it probably would happen, but.
Right, unlikely. But shared custody in the situation where this could potentially happen, or, um, even if they go and visit their grandparents for, you know, the year.
Okay. That makes sense. That's true. I guess it did happen more with COVID and everything too, if you remember cases like that.
All right. Next one is thirty five thirty, students, suicide, and the new policy thirty five thirty P, uh, procedure that goes with thirty five thirty.
So this one was built in conjunction with our school site, my day, our school counselor, Mackenzie, and, um, and some discussions with other districts. And you'll notice it's modeled off of, um, the Paul Donilon district. Those get credit at the bottom. Uh. That's like the sixth page. And we wanted just to have a really clear, explicit policy for when we encounter these sorts of things. And, um, also what our responsibilities are as far as suicide prevention and intervention as well as postvention.
I just took a long course on this today because I'm applying to be a coach for the golf team, and that's one of the requirements is suicide and safety. Um, I'll watch all these videos all afternoon. But I think it's, and my, my sister took her life, so it's very personal to me, the topic. Is this? Is this change here, um, all these changes? Is this the how? And I guess my other question is, like the one through fourteen, those are all new. Um, that, that is, that's the state law. That's our requirements. So who's doing that? Who's implementing that? Like last year, we had, it was last year, we had a whole counseling thing go, happened. It was kind of before you actually, two years ago. Do we have a school counselor now? And then those kids that were getting counseling, is that being taken care of now? Where are we at with that?
We have an in-house school counselor here once a week.
Okay.
So every Monday, Mackenzie is here on campus. And then we also have, uh, through our community school, we have a couple of different options for counseling, including charity health, BPA health, um. So there's one. I'm not in Boise County yet, but they're trying to come into Boise County, so potentially.
So, I mean, I'm reading that if somebody does try to say that now they're getting a, a letter to get back to the school also from their counselor. I just want to make sure that we have the counseling. I think it's just, it's, you know, like the statistics were fairly high. I just happened to build today. It was like, this is there being cause of death for adolescents. It's, um, fifty percent, um, have anxiety and consider themselves overstressed, twenty percent, you know, have got like, at some points, suicide thoughts. You know, so something comes up, but it's so easy to say, well, get a counselor. Go get some counseling, but it's hard to find one, you know, and pick one. And I just didn't know what resources we had for that.
Uh, we, we facilitate the process of getting a counselor.
Okay. So if a coach says, a kid comes, says, Adam, really, really stressed, and whatever, and then we have a policy or a procedure to get that kid some help?
And we do have, um, our, our in-house school counselor. She is contracted for, uh, emergency situations.
Okay.
We do have somebody have a call essentially for those situations. Uh, yeah. And otherwise, you know, if they, if they need more extensive counseling, like three hours, charity help is like a three-hour session block. And then we can get them hooked up with that. Their parents do have to participate, of course, and fully consent.
Okay.
Yeah.
This chunk.
And then, I'm sorry.
So you, go ahead. You finish.
Today I learned that there's a text program for suicide. But I don't, I didn't, wasn't aware of it. I don't know if the students are aware of it.
You mean our school polls?
Like if you're suicidal and you text, I think it's seven four one or seven one four, whatever it is, twice, when you say start, then you get a person immediately that's.
It's more like the phone.
Yeah, like the phone line, which I think would be more likely for a kid to try and do.
We have some.
But I don't know that there's any information about it. Like I learned about it today because I watched this video, but I don't see a sign, but I don't go to school here.
We have signs in the bathrooms.
Okay. To text that number?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it's in the hallways as well.
Okay.
And Boise County produced, uh, laminated sheet for us to share, community-wide as well. So here in, in the school, that is a whole bunch of resources. And so there's resources like that. We also have school polls, which is, um, a text, um, platform for both parents and kids to opt into, um, that we've had for a couple of years as well. Um, Ms. Barbara and I have been taking some online courses. Um, I just did a full day on Thursday that was specific to postvention. Um, and so there's a lot of efforts going into it. There was the Idaho, um, prevention conference up around San Valley last April that I was at, where that, I was in a course that was specific for that, where all of the, um, conference, uh, classes that I was in for that. So it's kind of like a, you know, like a community-wide as far as like our, our schools attempting to get as much of it as we can from multiple people.
My quick question, just like with the sentence, talking about providing annual professional development on it, would that, is that uh, being met by the videos that teachers are required to do at the beginning of each year? Are you guys doing like actual in-service on it now after having this piece? Like, does my question make sense? Can't remember the name of the videos. I apologize.
Safe Schools?
Safe Schools. There we go. But it came back to me.
Yep, with the trainings.
So that would be, that's what that is referring to.
And we are looking at getting some more extensive professional development.
The only question I have is a sentence from the second paragraph where the building principal may require a note for students, doctor or counselor. I realize all I want to give that personal wiggle room. I'm making a decision. I'm making that requirement. But I think it might take some of the onus of our, um, potential future liabilities if, say, something else were to reoccur, that maybe, I don't know if you guys have researched, if there's some type of, uh, protocol that a doctor or a counselor, whoever the student's seen, maybe helps to provide as far as how that student is interviewed back into the school as opposed to just giving you a note that says, here, she's ready to go back to school, N F D. Have you come across that at all? You know, you know what I'm trying to say?
I believe that postvention, yes. Yeah. Yes, I understand the question. I believe that the postvention measures that are attached to the ELEO, which is the assessment for suicide, that's broadly used and, um, what we've used in the past.
Okay.
I believe that they have all of the guidance.
So most doctors and counselors that are out there are aware of that and understand that. If they provide that, that's the expectation. Okay.
And it does, you're right, it does give a little bit of wiggle room.
Obviously, I would encourage that note, but I understand why it might be needed to.
I would stood out your, my, the decision tree kind of thing.
One thing that I can just add to that is our experience, as far as we have seen students re-enter, they typically are re-entering with other services that need to be provided at the same time, plans, things like that. And so it's not just a.
It's wrong. Yeah. One page.
We've never had a situation where we've just.
I hope they're.
Yeah, yes. We have had situations that have arisen where we do have to have intervention, but never one where we will just say, okay, we'll go back and talk to you. There are always measures.
True.
Thing that I kind of get tripped up with when we're going through policies is I look at the admin team that we have. I'm like, oh man, we're really good at this stuff. And I have to keep it in my mind that we're not always going to have the same people when we are doing these, these policies. So even if I'm comfortable with something right now, I have to look down the road at who's going to be in charge of it later. And so one that hung me up for a second was under the the procedure there. And then when it says the students apparently regarding may be contacted if appropriate, unless a delay in notification is warranted. And then it goes down and it, it leaves it up to the principal to decide if it's warranted or not. And I feel like we have the people in place to make really good decisions right now, but then maybe that won't be in the future. So.
That's something you, as a board, can certainly change, can add to that and adopt it as.
Okay. Cause I also thought about that when I was reading. Could you just talk me through like a potential situation where you might, like he was talking about the wiggle room, right? Like.
Yeah.
Like when would that be something that is beneficial in this situation, I suppose? Cause I'm having a hard time imagining it.
I, if I, before you, my, my thinking is, is the different levels of suicidal ideation, right? So if you have a student that you're kind of on the fence about, that maybe so you want that wiggle room to where you don't want it. Maybe the school.
maybe the school administration feels better to not put the doctor or the counselor on the spot by requiring that note, as far as the wiggle room goes, with requiring that note or not, if that makes sense.
I think, yeah, my, my concern more is the like, the may contact parents, right?
Right. On something that immediately comes to mind, and this hasn't occurred, but if a student were sitting in class and made a finger-bend motion at their head, to trigger, right? That could be considered as suicidal ideation?
Right. Okay.
Whereas some people may not constitute as that, so there is nuance to it.
Can I, are you talking about thirty five thirty, or are you back in the, which one are you?
P.
Either thirty, thirty five thirty or thirty five thirty P.
Well, we can talk about both at the same time, which is.
It's called a subject, but which line in particular are you asking about?
Yeah. Uh, mine was on thirty five thirty P, and it was the second, second page, number five at the top. But it goes into more detail on that thing. I mean, I can see where the parent might be, but these are why the kids having trouble.
I see.
Yeah.
That was my thought, that may, that's going to make it worse, contacting parents.
Yeah.
If the administration knows that or thinks that.
And this is what is like recommended by the state and like legal teams, like that wording of the may?
It's something that's been adopted. I believe that language was pulled directly from the McCall Donnelly policy. And we really, the, the team that put this together tried to model it off of other small districts. Thinking about the needs of our students as a small rural school.
I mean, I would think that would be a very special case, but it does put kind of a lot of risk on the school to make that call.
I see, a lot is.
And fire, sorry, the notification we made, it just may be delayed. So you, maybe you're handling a situation, you're handling the fallout of what's being seen at the school with the rest of the school. The child is being taken care of, now taking care of the children that are affected by the child that is being taken care of, and they're trying to get, maybe school is exiting notification, do you know what I mean? Just think of all these scenarios that could be happening at the same time. To think that the school district will not notify a parent that their child is, has suicidal tendencies is completely wrong and misread by what you guys, the may part. I have never seen that, ever.
Yeah.
Like I said, we definitely are on the side of.
But you've done the other, other way, like.
You call.
Yeah.
You contact, you reach out. Is it like thirty seconds ever happens?
No.
No, you know, like, so yeah, I, I, I see the hesitancy with the may, but I can recognize that the scope is.
It gives you the opportunity.
That child is taken care of first and foremost.
And then.
And then, and then, and then, and then.
It always happens, but in some weird scenario where the child is abused by the parent and the kid mentions it to the teacher, that's the one exception that they may not contact that parent.
And maybe that, maybe that, I don't, I've never been in that dynamic.
Instead of a shower, it gives them the flexibility.
Well, if you go down a couple paragraphs.
Yeah.
Just a little bit, garden will be noted by the desk, which is practical.
Oh, and then it expands upon endanger the health or wellbeing of the student. Yeah. And documented, okay, that, yeah. As to why there's a delay.
Do you guys think we need to make any changes to any of the policies that we discussed?
I'll make, do you need me to list out each policy by number or just as written? Is that okay?
I think by number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the amended policy twenty six oh five P, three thousand, thirty ten, thirty ten P, thirty thirty, thirty thirty one, and thirty eighty, as written.
Did we talk about thirty eighty?
I missed one. Oh, I was doing, yeah. And amended thirty five thirty. And the new thirty five thirty P.
Yeah, and actually thirty thirty one is new as well. We need to change that.
Do you need me to say again? I will, I'll do it. We'll make a motion to accept the amended policy twenty six oh five P, amended policy three thousand, amended policy thirty ten, amended policy thirty ten P, thirty thirty, and the new policy thirty thirty one, and amended thirty eighty, and amended thirty five thirty, and new thirty five thirty P policies as written.
Second. Motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mike, Mike, did you second?
He said yes. Okay. Old business is to revisit policy twenty one fifty, the copyright, copyright procedure. The corrections that you guys made in October forty.
There were just a few nuances to the corrections, and I think that after, after a few of them, we got into it a bit more, there were a few more, and I think that ultimately I made the corrections that you guys suggested, and I think you just wanted one more chance to look at it, to make sure I got it right, and that we grasp the changes that you made.
The only question I had on there was whether we need to, and I don't know if this would be the right place to do it under copyright or if it would be plagiarism, like under the student policy, but where we would talk about AI and how that could be added to the schools, like what's on? That's a good, probably a moving policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that, okay.
Yeah, that's very detailed.
Do you want that on the horizon?
Seems like it should be.
Yeah.
Okay, did you guys have any discussion about that?
All right, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, policy twenty one fifty P.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye? All right, we're gonna adjourn this meeting at eight oh three P M.
Hey, everybody, come on next.
Sorry, trying to make a motion while you're.
For the longest motion.
I know. I'm so tired. I know, me too.
So we do that policy discussion?
That's where some of the policy discussion, I was not able to turn it.
It's not a surface? Uh, mark response.
I just need some extra.